All right. Hello, hello everyone. Welcome to the League of Women Voters Forum here on October 11th, 2022. My name is Shelley Reese Randall and it's my pleasure to be the moderator for tonight's forum featuring the two general election candidates for Jefferson County Commissioner representing District Three. We have with us Greg Brotherton and Marcia Kalbon. We're so glad they could join us. Now, District Three, just in case you're not clear, includes the South County and West End communities of Quilcin, Brennan, Port Ludlow, Clearwater, Queesum, Blinn. In the August primary election, District Three voters narrowed down the field of candidates to these two. And in the November 8th general election, all Jefferson County voters will select our next county commissioner. Voting is indeed a cornerstone of our democracy. We so appreciate that you're listening tonight, either here on Zoom or via our media partner KPTZ 91.9 FM, Port Townsend's community radio station. For those of you on the radio who would like to join us via the Zoom link and see the candidates in action, visit the website for the League of Women Voters of Jefferson County at LWVWA.org backslash Jefferson, and you can find the link. And for those of you on Zoom, if you have any connectivity issues, you can keep listening on KPTZ at 91.9 FM or streaming online at KPTZ.org. League of Women Voters forums are focused on voter education. They are generally covered by both the Port Townsend Leader and the Peninsula Daily News, and we so appreciate our local newspapers' coverage of these events to share the information with those who couldn't attend live. Now, while I miss the good old days of in-person forums, this forum is being conducted as a webinar, so only the candidates and myself will be seen or heard. Attendees' cameras are off, their microphones are muted, and the chat feature is not available. This allows us all to focus on the substance of the forum. Now, over the past month, we have received dozens of thoughtful questions from the community. So the questions you will hear tonight are your questions. The League of Women Voters question wranglers have carefully curated the final question list. While in some cases they had to combine multiple questions on the same topic, they tried in all cases to preserve the original wording of the questions as they were submitted, and that's what you'll hear tonight. Please note that the candidates have no advanced knowledge of these questions. They will be hearing them tonight for the first time, along with you. Now, the agenda for tonight's forum looks like this. Very shortly, each candidate will give a two-minute opening statement. Then each candidate will have two minutes to answer each question I pose. At the end of the hour, each candidate will give a two-minute closing statement. We aim to end promptly at 7:00 PM. Enough logistics. I know you're eager to hear from Marcia Kalbon and Greg Brotherton, who are the two final candidates for the Office of Jefferson County Commissioner, a four-year term. So, we are going to alternate the order in which opening and closing statements and questions are answered. And so tonight, Greg Brotherton, you will go first with your opening statement. Take it away.
Okay. Thank you, Shelley. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting us tonight. I want to tell you about the work that I've been doing for the people of Jefferson County, serving you with action, compassion, and always with an eye toward teamwork. You know, these last couple of years have been tough on all of us, but as the Chair of the Board of County Commissioners, when COVID-19 hit our shores, I've done my part to lead this county on an even keel and with a positive attitude. We've worked together and trusted our public health experts. We continue our weekly radio updates to this day. Jefferson County has the highest boosted rate in Washington. I'm proud of how we've responded to COVID-19. But even before COVID, we had to deal with commercial shooting ranges. The ordinance from just before my election was rejected by the Growth Management Board. There were lawsuits from both sides of the issue and damages of $150 million on the table. Within six months, we passed an ordinance banning new outdoor commercial shooting ranges and settled each lawsuit with peace all around. Sometimes the sound of silence is harmony. We've received nearly $30 million in funding for the Port Hadlock Sewer, which will break ground by '24 and unlock a second urban growth area and more opportunities for multifamily housing. As the only cap chair, I've been a key player in the development of Seventh Haven, a 43-unit apartment that is the largest multifamily affordable housing project in Jefferson County for decades. Folks should be moving in in the first quarter of '23. Some of the residents there, I hope, will come from Coswell Brown Village on Mill Road, a project that addressed an unsanctioned homeless encampment at the fairgrounds that was creating health, safety risks for the surrounding community and for the residents of the encampment. I convened a conversation of stakeholders and kept coming back to work through the issues. Until I pushed us to step up and take responsibility, no one was addressing this problem. As your Commissioner, I serve on more than 20 boards and committees and always do my homework. I speak up at meetings so that our small county can have a larger voice in the region and access the services our people need. This includes Jefferson Transit, where I pushed to adopt free fares and pursue electric buses. Free fares are now our standard, and the first electric bus is ordered. Sometimes it feels like the government spins its wheels a lot, but we have traction on housing, infrastructure, climate change, community forestry, the list goes on. Everything's humming. I ask for your vote to continue the action, compassion, and teamwork I bring to build on our progress in Jefferson County. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, we will hear the opening statement from Marcia Kalbon.
Thank you very much. This is Marcia Kalbon. I'm running for county commissioner, and I'm really glad that you're here tonight and taking the time to become involved in this process. I have a background that is unusual for our county commissioners and certainly unusual to what we have now. I'm a chemical engineer and a patent attorney, and I worked for a dozen years with startup companies, helping them begin and grow their businesses. I then joined one of those companies, a biotech as a startup, and I was there for 19 years as the General Counsel and an executive. And we grew that company to create over 250 jobs. I love this area. I've lived west Sound and west canal for over 42 years now. I've raised my family and my adult children now raising their families here. And there's a couple of things that deeply concern me. One, it is very difficult for younger generations to make a go of it in Jefferson County. This is in part due to the shortage of housing of all types, and the county is starting now to provide subsidized housing and homeless encampments, but it's not really addressing housing that people that are looking to do it on their own can get into and afford to move forward in life. We also have a shortage of true living wage jobs. We have a lot of jobs. Most of them pay insufficient to really live in this area. That has concerned me as well as the way we are treating our unsheltered people. We are basically spending millions to warehouse them on gravel pads rather than addressing the underlying conditions that in most cases leave them here, which is often mental illness and addiction. And I'd like to see us address those issues, and I look at what I've done in my career. I have worked in highly regulated environments. I've obtained and administered grants. I've negotiated and enforced contracts, have hired and built teams, and worked cross-functionally and solved disputes both through litigation and mediation. So I have the skills and the experience to address the kind of issues that we have here. And that is what I have decided to do, is to try to step in and use that background to really address these re蚕蚕 issues so that we can make it an area that is prosperous just also for young people, but also for retirees that need young people to help them out. So thank you for being here tonight and for your questions.
Right. Thank you. Thank you both. For watching, audience, we do have a timer with a countdown clock, and I'll remind the candidates they have two minutes to answer each of these questions. The closer we can stick to our time, the more questions we can get to. All right, so on to the questions. As I mentioned, we are going to alternate. So Marcia, since you went last, you will now go first. Here is our first question. It's a bit more of a philosophical one. Abraham Lincoln is credited with the following quote: "Government should do for people only what they cannot do better for themselves and no more." Please share your agreement or disagreement with this quote and explain how this view should affect decisions on county business. Ms. Kalbon?
Thank you. You know, I in most part agree with that quote. I know I was driving to a meeting in Port Townsend earlier this week, and there was a large maple tree that had come down across the road. And within a matter of minutes, there were a dozen of us outside of our vehicles, all hauling off branches. One gentleman came out with a chainsaw, and we had that tree cleared in about 20 minutes. And that resilience, that self-responsibility and the ability to pitch in together and do things is so remarkable and is, Jeff, definitely the Northwest community that I know of here. The government at times proves more of a barrier than a benefit. There are people that need help from the government, and I'm thinking about our disabled people, our elderly. But for most of us, what we really need to do is get in and go about our lives. And we need a government that respects our rights and our ability to do that, and that doesn't prevent too many obstacles. Some obstacles are required because we also want to protect other people. We want to protect our environment, and that is critical. But for the most part, people can take care of themselves. And what we need is a government that facilitates that, makes sure people's rights are respected, and tries to make sure that we all have a chance to move forward. And that's what I'd like to try to do when elected as Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kalbon. Mr. Brotherton, your turn.
Can you repeat the quote, please, Shelley?
I will. Abraham Lincoln is credited with saying, "Government should do for people only what they cannot do better for themselves and no more."
Yeah, that's, it's a really, I appreciate, appreciate the question. It is a deep, deep quote, for sure. You know, I think that government really has a role in working on equity, diversity, inclusion. I think that Jefferson County has made a lot of progress in that, in that arena, and we need to do more, you know? Government fills in the gaps and makes sure that our social fabric is whole. You know, we've already heard about how there's a real housing crisis right now. And it used to be that, you know, people would starve on the streets until we decided that we're not going to have that as a society, and we built the SNAP program, the food stamps. And that's not, doesn't rely on congressional budget appropriations. That's as many people as need SNAP benefits get them. We did the same thing with education, where we decided, hey, you know, we need to fight this equity gap and make sure that all kids have the opportunity to get a public education. And the public education program is why our nation is as great as it is. You know, entitlements often come under fire as the government meddling in people's lives. But I really do believe that the free market does not take care of people, but we can as government. I fully believe in the concept of housing first, that, you know, giving someone a locking door, giving someone the security of knowing that their things are going to be there, that they can charge a phone, that's the first step to healing, whatever that is, whether you're dealing with substance use issues or mental health issues. So, you know, HUD believes in this, the housing, urban development. And we're working in that direction. We've created a lot more units of housing, and every run of our housing continuum is broken. As we relieve pressure on one run, it relieves more pressure on others. So I think housing first is something that we should really look at, not only locally, but at a federal level, to really, to treat it as a right. Thank you.
Thank you both. That was a great way to start this off. And honestly, in your answer, Mr. Brotherton, you have previewed the next question. It's about land use and housing. So you will begin by answering this one, and then we'll... Kalbon. Here's the question. A new ordinance for land use in Jefferson County has been proposed to replace one that is expiring. Will the candidates please explain how this new ordinance affects lots designated prior to 1971 and individual landowners? Please include how you understand this ordinance will maintain our county's rural character and how it will impact affordable housing. Mr. Brotherton, over to you. Oh, can you unmute yourself?
Yeah, details. Thank you. Thanks for the question, and this ordinance has actually passed. You know, there was a real loophole in our system before where we didn't have a clear way of determining the legal lot of record. We looked at 1971, but ended up going to August 11th, 1969 with our subdivision laws. And any property that has had a permit or had a, you know, plat map done after that time is considered a legal lot of record. Whether that's buildable is another question, and it often, the two issues get embroiled with each other. So one of the real strengths of this ordinance, I think, is the site review process that is a new process that's been added. Often people would end up, you know, digging perk holes and hiring a septic designer before actually finding out if a piece of property was developable. And a lot of these properties that we're talking about are the ones that are difficult to develop. They might have critical areas. Many are non-conforming lots, which means that in a one-house-for-five-acre zone, they might be, you know, on two acres or even less. So it's a lot of complicated land use rules, but ultimately, it depends. If you have, if you're in a house that was permitted before 1971, you're good. If you're on a piece of land between 1937 and August 11th, 1969, you don't automatically have a legal lot of record, which is required to develop your property. But it's a very fairly simple process to go through and determine whether it is a legal lot of record. The loophole that we were trying to address with this is paper plats from the 1890s, when someone in Chicago or Seattle just drew up a dense neighborhood that did not, did not conform with the Growth Management Act or the rural character that so many of us came to this area for. So two minutes is not a lot to dig into this issue, and I'd love to take another half an hour. We spent, I think, 12 hours on it in the last couple of weeks at the commissioners. Thank you.
Well, thank you for trying to summarize there. Now the question goes to Ms. Kalbon.
Thank you. As noted, this is an ordinance that has been adopted, and it addresses lots that were planted prior to 1969, and they were created legally. It's just that they are not consistent with the current zoning and with the current planning process. So there was an ordinance drafted after a moratorium was put in place. The moratorium was put in place to address some large developments that would in fact impact a rural character and potentially the environment. And it was put in broadly so that it impacted a lot of individual lots as well that individual owners have. And it created a huge uproar, so many of those smaller lots were carved out of the moratorium. When the ordinance came back in, it was broadened to include all lots prior to 1969, whether they were individual or groups. And, you know, I have to say to Greg Brotherton's credit, he questioned in the initial review of this at the county commissioners' meeting, would this impact the ability of individuals to build? There was then, the next week, a task force or a workshop for the county commissioners specifically to go through this ordinance. And again, he questioned, would this impact? But that was it, just the question. I then spent a day coming through the ordinance and drafting a three-page letter that I sent to the commissioners and the DCD. And the next Monday, when there was a public hearing, my comments were addressed in detail. And Greg did pick some of those comments up and now actually had substantive comments and suggestions and pushed those forward, and some changes were made to the statute. I think it's still overly broad, but it's better, and I'm glad to have impacted that process. I wish that homework had been done earlier in the process rather than the last day at the public hearing. But currently, there is a legal lot of record determination to be made for those older lots before it can be determined to be buildable, and you have to meet an exception to be able to do so. Or if you own multiple lots, you have to combine them to meet current zoning. So it's addressed the large development issues, but unfortunately, it's also still impacting some individuals, but it's better than it was when first proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kalbon. You know, I'm going to use the moderator's prerogative here, and I'm going to ask the second part of that question again, because I feel that each of you only really covered the first part of the question. So this was a multi-part question. Now, Ms. Kalbon, I'm going to have you go first and answer what I will repeat is the second part of this question. Please include how you understand this newly passed ordinance will maintain our county's rural character and how it will impact affordable housing.
So it's going to do some good things with respect to the rural character. Again, these large developments that were proposed, for instance, up in Cape George, that would have really destroyed the rural nature of that area and potentially significantly impacted shorelines, those will not happen. However, there are situations that were addressed that I think will still impact potentially housing and particularly housing that's not so costly to build. So if you have five one-acre lots that were planted prior to 1969, under this ordinance, you are required to combine all of those to meet the current zoning of one per five acre. Or if you had three lots, you would combine them to get as close as you could. That means that there are five lots that were legally created that would have been cheaper to build on that no longer exist. They will be combined. There are also individual lots that are not, where someone doesn't own multiple, so they don't have to combine them, that they won't be able to build on unless they can do a couple of things. One, they have to prove that they meet current septic requirements, and that's fair. Two, that they have potable water, again, fair. But then there's some other conditions that they have to meet. It has to be next to a lot that was already built on. What if there's a couple lots that were built, and then there's one that skipped, and then there's yours that seems a little tight to me? So there's a series of these things you have to meet to fit that exception, or there's another exception where there's no other reasonable use of the property. And that was clarified through this revision process last day to say there's no other reasonable residential use of the property. You have to fit into one of those buckets, and if you don't, it's not buildable. Even if it was a lot that was previously built on, and you're now look to upgrade or replace a structure with a newer one, you have to go through this process. So I fear that there will be some that are lost that would be the type of lots we really need in this county, which are not the five acres and the 20 acres, but some smaller lots that are not so costly. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Brotherton, to tell us a bit more about how you understand this ordinance will maintain our county's rural character and how it will impact affordable housing.
Thank you, Shelley. Well, the new ordinance will certainly protect our rural character and that it doesn't allow these paper plats where, you know, there was no, there was no subdivision rules or laws. There was no land use at all, and it really makes sure that they hue to the, to the local conforming standards, the zone. But how it will affect affordable housing is really pretty negligible. As I said in the last answer, most of these properties that we're talking about are not easily developable. They're often challenging in a lot of ways, and all of these rules that have been developed already existed. They just weren't codified. There was a lot of different places, and sometimes you'd have, you know, a property would go to the DCD, then over to the assessor's office, then to environmental, public health. By clarifying and putting in the new site development review, we really are making it much easier for folks to find out how developable a piece of property is. It's not more developable or less developable than it was a week ago before this ordinance was passed. It is just clarified. I like to say that we've actually put the horse back in front of the cart with a site development review. Adding more code is never an obvious way to work better, but as we, you know, it's iterative progress in code, we're on regulatory reform. And I think that the, it's not, it's not perfect, and we will see the impacts down the line, but affordable housing really is going to come with, you know, multifamily housing, the Habitat Project in the Port Hadlock Phase One Sewer, you know, creating 120 units of 80% to 120% workforce housing. That's where we're going to really address the affordable housing issue. I really have, I fight for all sorts of appropriate technologies like pit privies when appropriate that will allow us to, to, while, when it's safe and environmentally possible, lower the barriers to creating housing. Oh, I guess my little shaky connection.
We could hear everything you said, though. Great. Well, we get to stay on the same topic, which gives you a feel for the type of questions that were submitted and what quantity. That's how these are ordered. So we're going to continue with the topic of housing. Here is question number three, and we will have Mr. Brotherton take this one first. Separate from the new ordinance we just discussed, many architects and builders have noted that it is exceptionally hard to build anything, let alone low-income housing in Jefferson County. What have you done or will you do to remove barriers to building while still protecting the fragile environment and ecosystem? Be specific on policies you support.
Right. Well, you know, we, at county government, we have some control over, you know, we get more blame and more credit for affordable housing. You know, we get public funds that are really only good for 60% of AMI area median income and below. So when we're talking about affordable workforce housing, really what we can do is set the table. So the Port Hadlock Sewer, as I said, is the biggest single thing we can do to unlock that second urban growth area to create the table for developing affordable housing. You know, and we really, I mean, there's policy from the federal to the state level that impacts this, right? In Germany, you get a tax rebate if you own a property that's a rental property. Here you get mortgage insurance, including encouraging single-family ownership. So this, this is an issue that goes up and down. But specifically on the codes, you know, as I say, I argue for pit privies and reducing the barriers to creating housing all over the place. I think I really want to incentivize, you know, those homesteaders that are trying to carve out a life on their own property. Developers are going to respond to the market, and our market in Jefferson County has traditionally been custom single-family homes, and that's the kind of developers we have here. If we're going to truly make a difference in affordable housing, we're going to have to incentivize multifamily developing. We're going to have to find more ways to incentivize affordable housing. We have some bonuses right now, but deferring some fees for, you know, to guarantee that, you know, for a covenant on the title to maintain a housing, house in affordable status, you know, this kind of thing, the land trust model, working with our partners at Habitat and other partners. That's a good way to do it. We've partnered with the city on Evans Vista in developing a piece of property that has mixed-use retail and affordable housing. So we're on, we're on the path. Thank you.
Thank you. Question over to you, Ms. Kalbon.
Sure. Thank you. There's a number of things we can do, and I'm not going to sit here and tell you you're going to completely rewrite our uniform development code as Mr. Brotherton did four years ago. That's not possible, but there are things we can do to nibble around the edges on this issue. We have a comprehensive plan under the Growth Management Act that can be amended. It's supposed to be amended annually, but we have frozen that for other than affordable and homeless housing. And when I say affordable, I mean government subsidized. I think what we need is not just that kind of affordable housing, but what I refer to as reasonably priced housing, things that are not subsidized. And we need to amend our plan so that our historic village centers and crossroads can be expanded a bit, so we have some smaller lots that are not so costly to build on instead of always five acres or greater. There's other things that we can do. We have an ordinance locally that if you have a septic that is working and you have a dilapidated mobile home or an older house that you want to expand or replace, you have to upgrade your septic to the most recent code, and that may add $30,000 or $40,000 to the cost. That's fair if the old septic has failed and is leaching, but if it's still working appropriately, why have that? Let's get rid of that provision. Let's have some pre-approved engineered septic plans that meet the state requirement on the shelf of the county that you can pull down and use and saves yourself the $5,000 or $7,000 to engineer one of those. Let's have a trusted builder program that says if you have established that you can build to code, remove all of the permit fees for inspections, maybe except for the final inspection, and remove those steps that don't add anything to the process but cost, and have a spot program to make sure people are being honest. We have a lot of seniors that are concerned about being taxed out of their houses and a housing shortage. What about a tax credit for people who are willing to sublet a portion of their house to someone who is not related? So you create some additional housing and also address those tax concerns. These are the kind of creative thinkings that we need to undertake to start solving this issue, and it's going to take, it's going to take some time, but we can do it stepwise. Thank you.
Thank you both for those very thoughtful responses. Our next question. Topic, listen up. And it's interesting, heard a variation of this question in the Voters Forum for our sheriff's candidates. So, starting with you, Ms. Kalbon, what specific policies do you plan to enact to fix the underlying causes of homelessness?
Great. Thank you. You know, there is a portion of our homelessness issue that is driven by economic issues. I freely admit that, and we do have to address the housing situation so we don't have people that are, you know, trying to live in RVs and people's couches. They're considered homeless even though they have a home. So we have to address that through the housing, and we've talked about. But for the most part, if you go through any of the shelters, either official or unofficial, what you find are people that are ill. They are either addicted or they're mentally ill or both, and often it is both. And they really need treatment. And I'm not an expert here, but I used to run clinical studies for schizophrenia. I used to run clinical studies for substance abuse disorder, so I'm not unfamiliar with them. And we have, used to have levers we could use with the police, the sheriff, where if they had somebody that was in a bad state and they were arrested for possession of hard drugs, not soft stuff, but hard drugs, fentanyl and meth... where if they had somebody that was in a bad state and and they were arrested for possession of hard drugs, not not soft stuff, but hard drugs, fentanyl and methamphetamine, they could have a choice, either go to prison or or get get some treatment. And that was often the best thing that happened to those people, talking to people in recovery. That is often what they needed to move forward. We don't have that lever. What I'd like to do is is use our shelters for a bit of a lever to say, look, if you want to come here and you need to help and you want to stay at one of our shelters, then here's a couple of requirements. One of them is get screened. And if you need help for addiction or mental illness, start partaking of that help. Get them on the path of potentially moving forward, rather than just saying, live here and live here in in misery for three years. And, you know, our our shelter, the the current one is better than the old one, but it still has really sick people in it. And outside of that shelter are a greater number of people living in conditions that are worse than third world. And it's just not humane. We need to start funding recovery efforts and making that at least as important as as housing to to address these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll turn the question over to Mr. Brotherton.
Could you restate the question, please, Shelley?
Of course. What specific policies do you plan to enact to fix the underlying causes of homelessness?
Well, you know, I do disagree with my opponents considerably here. I think the underlying cause of homelessness is not having a home. There's a lot of ancillary issues, mental health and substance use issues, which we can look at national policy back to the 80s to look at the cause for that. But any of these policies, and we have a lot of programs right now to deal with folks that do have mental health and substance use issues, but they have the freedom to take them or not, to use that as a lever to, you know, get straight. And and then we'll get you a place to stay is, I believe, unconscionable. We have, we have definitely focused on the crisis points that people interact with law enforcement. And I always believe that it is cheaper to do preventive care than it is to deal with the crisis. So we have a mental health navigator embedded in the in the sheriff's department now. We have a pre-law enforcement real navigator team that through discovery, 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 mental health that that gets involved before that happens. And we also, contrary to what my opponent said, do have therapeutic courts and substance use and mental health courts that are very effective. But they're dealing with, you know, maybe 10 people, 15 people. And the the problem, the scope of homelessness right now, our point in time count is often at 170, which is the tip of the iceberg. And contrary also to my opponent's statements, many people that don't identify as homeless are are working homeless. You know, many of the folks working, making, you know, very respectable wages down at the boatyard are de facto homeless. So we need to work on creating more housing stock at every level of the of the housing continuum. We need to pair that to continue to pair it with great programs like Dove Houses Recovery Cafe, with the real navigators, with the with the programs that are already on the street. Jefferson County was one of the the first county that that started the behavioral health, that 1/10 of 1% tax to address just that sort of issue. So we're on that track as well. Thank you.
Both. As a reminder, we are broadcasting live on KPTZ 91.9 FM, Port Townsend's community radio. And you are listening to the League of Women Voters Forum for Jefferson County Commissioner. All right, let's continue with a question that you can take off in a different direction if you so choose. Mr. Brotherton, you will start with this one. Please discuss three aspects of the Jefferson County budget that you would like to see changed and explain why you would advocate for these changes to the budget. Oh, unmute yourself. There we go.
Yeah, this is complicated. It is one of the large responsibilities of the of the county that we, the county commissioners do oversee the budget, even of the other elected officials as well as our appointed directors. One of the changes I would say we've we've already done, which is kind of remove the barriers, the the filters between independent departments and and our and our decision point. So instead of having, you know, our county administrator work with each department and bring a pretty much, you know, a a complete budget to us, where we're removed, we're stepping back one level and having the budget conversations in open public meetings with each department for the second year. And last year it was it was a, you know, we moved to binary and budgeting. So it's less work every other year, but it was, it was really great to understand kind of the the needs of each different department. And going back to my opponent's answer last time, we really don't have much tax authority to give breaks on property taxes or anything. You know, even the senior discount on property taxes is a, comes from the state legislature. And we constantly are petitioning the state legislature to lower the threshold for senior discount on property taxes. But we don't have that lever to pull ourselves. Levers that we do have to pull, something that I've been pushing since I was elected, was gliding down our diversion from from the road fund into law enforcement. And we started that glide down. We were one of the highest counties in the in the state that took, I think, $720,000 out of the road fund and put it into law enforcement for use on on the roads. And while that is, you know, important, we want to make sure all the budgets. Oh, geez, that really been two minutes already. Two other things I would change, you know, hiring.
You know what? You're not going to get to tell us about other things. We are simply out of time. And that means that Ms. Kalban, you have the choice, the chance to tell us about three aspects of the Jefferson County budget that you would like to see changed.
Okay, thank you. Well, as a priority, I would say public safety. And, you know, we're, I'm down here in South County. I'm sitting here down in in Brennan where we had a shooting recently. And and we had wonderful response from from our sheriff's office. But, you know, they're a long ways away and they're not, they're not always down here. And I hear the same concerns from folks at Port Ludlow and Quillseen. And I have had conversations with the sheriff who has done a remarkable job of of navigating the sheriff's department through a period where there was really a lot of animosity towards law enforcement and funding of law enforcement. And he kept things steady, which is great. But he also didn't feel like he could justify asking commissioners for additional help. And he now acknowledges he needs that. We we need additional deputies in these outlying areas. And I would make that a priority is to is to fully fund law enforcement, EMS, disaster planning. These are things that we need the government to do, individuals can't. The other area is infrastructure and and roads in particular. I am glad that we are starting the drawdown of diversion of road funds to to the sheriffs. The sheriffs already already be fully funded out of the general fund. We should reduce that diversion further. It's still 670,000 this year. It goes down a bit more next year. But there are, the Public Works does a remarkable job, but they have a lot of lists that never get to the point of being funded because they're they're too far down. That is something that we ought to do as a as a county priority. The lastly, last year, December 6, 2021, the commissioners did two things. One, they voted themselves in a pay raise to their positions and fairly they take effect each time they're filled from 93,000 to 101,000, over more than twice the per capita income. And at the same day, they adopted, despite record revenue excise tax, excise sales tax and ARPA, the maximum level 1% per per ad valorem property tax increase. Those two things are tone deaf, at least I'd like to roll them back. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Well, we clearly are not going to have time to get through all of the questions that were submitted. So I encourage you, if your question is not asked tonight, that you can reach out directly to the candidates. I'm sure they'd be happy to speak with you each. And I hope that in your closing statements in just a few minutes, you'll tell us how people can reach you. Therefore, I'm going to bring up just a couple more more questions that perhaps may draw some more of the differences between the two candidates. And so Ms. Kalban, I'm going to have you answer this one first. Here's the question as submitted. Many voters in District Three believe that the recent Jefferson County Board of County Commissioners statement regarding transgender rights is an affront to women's civil rights and feel that it does not represent them. Please explain the process you followed or would follow to consult with members of District Three before votes such as this so that all the voters in the district feel their opinions are being heard.
Thank you. Go ahead. This is a District Three question, but this was a proclamation that actually impacts the entire county. And I have to say, it's a proclamation that doesn't have a lot of teeth. You know, proclamations are a statement of belief rather than than an actual act. In this situation, I I think that it's 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 really unfortunate the way things played out. I fully respect trans individuals, LGBT individuals. I have them in my family. I have a married gay and lesbian in my family and and friends. I have a niece, a very dear niece who is non-binary. And they should have the right to go places where they can feel and be safe. But there's not a woman listening tonight that won't tell you she's either been assaulted, threatened with assault, or knows somebody they care deeply about that's been assaulted. And, you know, women also have a right to feel and be safe. And I wish this had been balanced out, which is what we really need here. I wish there'd been a chance for the the person who who first complained here to have been given what the WAC said, which was a private space that would have protected her feelings and also the the feelings of the trans individual. So we didn't have that balance. And I I think what we really need to do in situations like this is not act so reflexively. And we need to make sure that we are taking steps that really do match the view of the community overall and respect everybody's rights. And that simply just comes from being out with the community at at large and not just particular groups or or the groups that tend to be the loudest. You know, we have a wonderful community of activists and they do their job well. And there's a lot of people here that are just busy getting on with their lives that frankly are are too quiet and they don't provide that feedback. So I think it really goes to the community as well to start providing that feedback, to be involved at 10 commissioner meetings. You can do so virtually and and follow these things. And and hopefully we can avoid those sort of issues in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brotherton, over to you.
Yes, thanks for the question. You know, it was an easy proclamation for us to support, and I'm happy to talk with anyone. You know, as we're trying to represent 32,000 people, everyone's got different opinions. And there's going to be, there's always going to be issues that we disagree on, that you and I disagree on. And I think the as leaders, what we need to do is listen and make sure that we value opinions. And we've been doing this throughout the COVID pandemic, even opinions that were inflammatory and full of misinformation. You know, you need to give everyone their chance to to be heard. And I think that we do a really good job at that. Regarding the specific situation at the Mountain View Pool, you know, state law says that you get to use the bathroom that you identify with. It's it's as simple as that. And harassment is harassment. And it seemed like it was clear harassment to me to that poor trans employee that was that was frightened, the kids were frightened. So there was harassment that was going on there. And I I think the response was absolutely appropriate. Our proclamation was to, it was, you know, a a statement of of support. And it's, it was an easy one to make because it supported state law. And, you know, the 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 toxic response to some of this has been really, really disturbing. And, you know, you get that on all sorts of things. I've had my family slandered. I've had all sorts of attacks. And you need a really thick skin to be able to do this job. And you need to be able to listen to opinions that you don't agree with and to change your mind. And I've changed my mind on on plenty of issues. And I think that avoiding cognitive bias is something that we all need to strive to do better at, something I consciously do. And I would, I guess, tell any resident of District Three or or throughout the county. If you, if we disagree about something, I'd love to sit down and chat with you about it and and work through that disagreement. Thank you.
All right, thank you both. Well, similarly with some a bigger social topic, the question next, which Mr. Brotherton will start with. In October 2020, two members of the Board of County Commissioners voted to support a public resolution declaring racism as a public health crisis. Explain your reasoning in supporting or not supporting this resolution. Oh, do you unmute yourself?
Sorry, October 2020. Well, we did at the, can't remember if I voted for that or not, because I know that we brought it into the Board of Health, which seems like the more appropriate place to consider this kind of proclamation. I do believe that racism is a public health issue. Everything comes down to 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 public health, really. You know, the housing is a public health issue. You want to know about health outcomes? Tell me your zip code and I can, I can tell you that. But institutional racism, you know, the the obvious redlining, the the tragedies inflicted on the indigenous people by the Homestead Act and and just coming in and running roughshod throughout the the landscape is something that has created inequities. And we need to do what we can to to balance the scales and then to really strive for for improving our approach to equity, diversity and inclusion. You know, I mean, a land acknowledgement is to the, to like the Skowal people and to the other tribes that have used this this land since time immemorial is something that is strong. Just on Monday, we we were really proud to have some of our our tribal, our tribal partners join us for Indigenous Peoples' Day, October 20, oh, I forgot, on Monday. And, you know, that kind of communication, I think, is something that we can, we can do better at. There are institutional racism is one of those things that's really tough. And, you know, we've been working really hard throughout the county at addressing that, uncovering it. And you just have to face yourself in your own, as I said in the last question, your own cognitive bias in the in the mirror and be open to learn in a different way. Some of the grants that we did with the CARES program, just learning from some of the BIPOC community about how even the application process was was not fair was very informing. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kalban.
Thank you. I have to confess to not having followed the the board in October of 2020. So I'm not sure what was behind this 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 proclamation. And I'm, it's a little puzzling that it was only two people that supported it because it seems. So I I just wondered if there was more that I'm not picking up there, but it sounds like something that would be easy to get behind. Racism is a crisis in many ways, and a health crisis is certainly one. You just go back and look at the, you know, the Tuskegee experiments as as an example of that. And and you do look at the indigenous people and what they've gone through. There are many instances of that, and they're they're not tolerable. And we and we shouldn't support them in any way, shape or form. I I have some privilege. I am white, so I can't fully understand what people of color go through. But I do know if I step back, I grew up in a in a suburban area outside of Philadelphia that was fairly white. And there were just a couple of African American families and they lived on one single cul-de-sac street that we kind of refer to as the Black Street. And it wasn't till I grew up that I realized that my mom's family, who was Italian, lived on the Italian street. And I once made the mistake of telling one of my elder aunts an Italian joke using a derogatory term that to me was just kind of a joke, but to her it was a grave insult. I overcame that because I have the privilege of being white. My my mom's family and her her siblings did not have that same experience. So I I understand that there are things I don't know because I haven't lived it. I didn't live that during that time, and I haven't lived a person of color's life now. But it's not something we should tolerate anywhere. So if if there's somebody that's not having equal access to to healthcare, they should certainly have that. That is, that is a basic human right. And I wish I knew more about the particular proclamation and why it wasn't a three person proclamation. It's puzzling, but thank you.
You both. And I so appreciate that both are are are, you know, questioners who submitted these great questions and our candidates. They're not shying away from these really hard issues. They're thorny. They're challenging, and I really appreciate, again, your thoughtful responses. We have time for just one more question. And so the League of Women Voters President has suggested one to end on. And Angela Gurko, we're going to go with your suggestion. Ms. Kalban, you will answer first and then Mr. Brotherton. And after that, we will have closing statements in opposite order. All right. So right now, only the district votes in the primaries, but the whole county votes for county commissioners in the general elections, allowing the people in District One and Two to determine who represents the citizens of District Three. Do you believe the voting procedures for electing county commissioners should be changed such that only the district votes for its representative? Please explain your reasoning.
You know, that's, that's a really good question. And we don't have a home rule charter form of government. I actually would be very interested in that. I know it was tried here in years past and it did not pass. So it's not what we have. But there are, there are differences between the districts, certainly. And I know there is a feeling often in the outlying districts, that there certainly is in the South End, there certainly is on the West End, that their voices are lost. There certainly is on the West End, that their voices are lost to the larger population in Port Townsend. And that is a concern. I think frankly, there are probably more issues we have in common than we know. Like the housing shortage impacts people not just living where they're at, but people who are looking to employ people that live in the rest of the county. Or, and so that is uniform. Many of these issues are uniform. But we do have to make sure we don't lose the voices in the outlying areas. I raised the point earlier about having talked with the sheriff about additional sheriff deputies. We used to have a substation down here in Quillseen. And when I add up the populations of Brennan and Quillseen and Coyle, I come up with roughly 10% of our population. I think we warrant that, but it hasn't been provided. So I'd like to make sure that we don't lose paying attention to these outlying areas, including District 3. We don't have a home rule charter right now. So it's since commissioners decide matters that apply to the whole county, it's probably appropriate that we're all voting. But I would be very interested in pursuing a home rule charter in the future. But that's just not where we're at today. So, thank you.
All right. Over to you, Mr. Brotherton.
Yes, thank you. It's an interesting question. I think 2011, we tried at the Home Rule Charter. You know, Clallan County is a charter county. And they used to do it where each district would vote in both the primary and the general, just in their district. And they just changed that. You know, their charter commission just changed it this year. And I agree with that change to be similar to the way that most counties like ours do it. And it's because, you know, our work spans the entire county. And it's good that we represent all of the people of the county. I've worked with folks in Maristone Island and Cape George and Port Townsend. And, you know, there are a lot of things that are very district-specific and a lot of assignments that end up being district-specific. But our roads, our sheriff's department, our treasurer, all of our services are throughout the county. And it's reasonable that our, that the elections are the way that they are. So I think it's a strong system. I do think there are a lot of opportunities and improving opportunities for being heard. And, you know, I regularly go out into the community. And I think that the accessibility of our local commissioners and assessor and all of our elected officials is pretty unusual. And I think if someone has an issue, I've said this in an earlier question, but, you know, G. Brotherton, it's co.jefferson.us.wa.us. It's, we're accessible. If you have an issue, talk to us and we work for you. And we work for all of the people of Jefferson County. And I really strive to serve the plurality of District 3 voters. You know, as I said earlier, we're not going to all agree. And in District 3, we disagree in spectacular ways sometimes. But we really do agree on most of the values that we want in our public government. And I strive to bring that. And I think that the existing election systems serve that well. Thank you.
Thank you both. Well, that does conclude our question list. And so that means it's time for our two-minute closing statements. And I actually was reminded that these need to go in the opposite order from your opening statements. And so that means that Ms. Kelbon will go first. So candidate Marcia Kelbon, we will now hear your closing statement.
Great. Well, thank you to the League for hosting this. And thank you for all the individuals that tuned in and those who sent in questions. I'm so glad that people are involved in the process. You know, we have a lot of issues in this county. It's a wonderful community. It's a wonderful environment. I'm so glad that I live here. But we have some issues that have been brewing for quite some time. The housing shortage didn't just happen one year, two years, three years. It's at least 20 years in the making. The shortage of jobs, we never backfilled for logging and fishing industries. And we have some generations in some of our outlying areas that are just a couple generations now of homelessness. We need to really start addressing these things. And if people think that what we're doing is working in these regards, if they think that what we're doing is with respect to our homeless populations are working in this regard, and I submit that what we were doing was tried in Seattle and failed, then by all means, keep things the way they are. But if you agree that some change is needed, I think I can objectively say I have a background that is well-suited to address these topics that we have not had before. And I'd love to use that experience and that skill set to try to really tackle these hard issues. Many people in this county will stop based on a political party basis. And I ask that people think more open-mindedly than that. I am not represented by any political party on the national level. I frankly am really hard to pin there because I'm very moderate. And you might be making assumptions about me that are completely wrong. But I'm focused on what we can do here locally. And I think we really need to start addressing these issues. So I ask you to consider who I am, what I've done, and what I can do for the county. And I ask for your support. And thank you for taking the time again tonight. And if you want to find more information, you can go to ElectMarcia, M A R C I A, Kelbon, K E L B O N dot com, or my Facebook page, also creatively called ElectMarciaKelbon. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. All right, folks, that was candidate Marcia Kelbon. And now we will hear from candidate Greg Brotherton.
Thank you so much, Shelley. And thank you, Gary, and all the folks at the League of Women Voters for putting this on, for the folks that submitted questions and for the people watching right now. And after the fact, appreciate everyone participating in what is often, you know, dry, right? And I think it was Mario Cuomo who quipped that, you know, you campaign in poetry and govern in prose. And I certainly tried to bring a little bit of poetry to the way that I governed. You know, you consider yourself lucky that I don't pull the banjo off the wall and sing you out here. And I bring a lot of prose back to this campaign as well, because it has been a busy, busy time. We have got an unprecedented amount of state and federal money coming into our county right now. Projects that have been delayed for decades are breaking ground, have already broken ground. We've got the first bit of the sewer in already. And I just want to push back a little bit on the idea that we don't have any well-paying jobs. Our housing crisis is such that we can't hire people at any job level. We have, we struggle to hire executives, doctors, nurses, engineers, because there is no place to live. So the housing crisis is not something that is unique to Jefferson County. Our response to it is fairly unique and we have made some inroads. You know, it's every month I'm out making a talk into another county that wants to adopt some sort of kind of the model of the outdoor shelter that we brought to Coswell Brown. And I think that the action, the compassion and the teamwork that I bring is, has really served Jefferson County well. So I ask for your support to continue to be the connective tissue, connecting the people to the government with a real common sense interface. I mean, I've worn many hats in my life, from teacher to tech and storekeeper to school board member, filmmaker to farmer, and I feel like I found my true calling is serving as your county commissioner. And I ask for your support this year. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. That was candidate Greg Brotherton. Well, we're wrapping up here. Thank you, listening audience, for joining us for this fascinating policy discussion. And thank you very much to the candidates for their thorough and thoughtful responses. These two have taken the bold act of running for office. Now it's our turn to vote. Here's some information on what to expect in the coming weeks. Ballots and voter pamphlets will be mailed out on October 19. And ballots may be returned by mail until Election Day, November 8, or placed in one of the many ballot drop boxes throughout the county. If you're wishing to register to vote or update your voter registration information, you must do so online or by mail before October 19. After that date, you'll need to the auditor's office at the Jefferson County Courthouse in Port Townsend. Did you know you can register to vote right up until Election Day? Again, that day is Tuesday, November 8. Those mailing in their ballots are urged to do so well before the November 8 postmark deadline, just to be sure. And please remember that drop boxes close at 8:00 PM on Election Day. This forum has been recorded, so it is a wonderful resource for these next couple of weeks. It will be posted on the League of Women Voters of Jefferson County YouTube channel within about a week. If you thought it was informative, please find the link on YouTube or on the League's website and share it widely. And that website is again, L W V W A dot org backslash Jefferson. I want to thank the numerous volunteers from the League of Women Voters of Jefferson County who worked hard to put this event together and saw many other voter forums this past year. It has been a very busy one. Thank you to our media partner, KPTZ 91.9 FM, and the Zoom technical crew backing us all up. I'm your moderator, Shelley Reese Randall, signing off. It's 7 o'clock. Good night, all.